I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Mr. Powell, would you please lead us in prayer?
Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the good things that you've provided for us. Father, we would ask a blessing on those who have less than we do. Look after them, Father, and provide them and protect them. Father, we ask that you guide us tonight in this meeting, that you lend your hand in making sure that we provide the right decisions and make the right decisions on behalf of the city of Levelland. We thank you for this wonderful community that we live in. We hope that you will make the city prosper and always be mindful that you're our God. We pray through Christ. Amen.
Amen.
And then we have one question that you have about two minutes left. If you'll come up and join us and just little housekeeping you and they said before you've done this before, just state your name and address, please, and have three minutes. And thank you for coming. Oh, you're welcome. Take your time.
Okay. My name is Jansen Macker. I live at three oh seven Cactus. I moved here about roughly fifteen years ago. And before that, I lived on our beautiful Texas Gulf Coast for about fifty years. So the reason I bring that up, I'm a veteran of a lot of storms and a lot of cleanup efforts. I have yet, despite all those cleanup efforts I've been through in my life, seen a continuing mess like we have on Sherman and Maple. It's absolutely disgusting. It supposedly closed in mid-July. I live in that area. I go past there multiple times a day. I rarely see any cleanup efforts. I do see people out there scavenging. And I do see new arrivals showing up despite the fact that it's supposed to be closed. It's going to take one scavenger and one cigarette butt before we have a big problem like a fire or a good windstorm and it's gonna go everywhere. So what do we do? We need to either fence it off, put some game cameras out so we can catch the people that are doing this, or the ideal situation, get it cleaned up as quick as possible. I mean, this is in the middle of town. The other dump site got cleaned up rather quickly. Penny Newman is kind of out there like a little orphan anyway. But people go up and down Sherman to South Plains College all day, every day, and they see this. My own daughter-in-law, who is from Arizona, came the other day, says, Jen, what is going on? Are they ever gonna clean it up? And I just sit there and shrug like an idiot because nobody knows anything. Nobody knows what's going on or when it's gonna happen. It's an embarrassment. Can we please clean it up, preferably yesterday? Thank you. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Macker. All right. The first item on the agenda, we will consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of the August fifth, twenty twenty four regular meeting and the August eighth, twenty twenty four special meeting.
I'm making motion to set for meeting of May twenty twenty four.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is we will consider and take necessary action to propose a tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, and establish the date for the year.
Mayor, council members, members of the public. Before I jump into this item too far, I want to thank Joe Vasos, our Assistant City Manager, and Cynthia Sanchez, our Finance Director, for their long hours and dedication and diligence to getting us to this point. We received our numbers from the county about a week ago. Since then, we've been looking at these numbers, trying to verify these numbers, trying to make sure they are correct, because once we establish the tax rate, once we adopt it, even if we find out down the road that that number's wrong, we're stuck. So they've spent a lot of times going over the numbers, making sure that they are correct, and apologize, we didn't have it for you when the packet originally went out, but we got it to you as fast as we could as this weekend. If you'll recall, our current tax rate is point five four two zero two. We've, our values came in at approximately five percent in the positive, and as you look in preparing taxes for consideration for the city council, the legislature a few years ago took a complicated process and made it even more complicated by creating three different levels. One of them was a no new revenue tax rate. One of them is a voter approval tax rate. And then the last one is a de minimis tax rate. And the no new revenue is basically the tax rate that would produce the same amount of revenue that you received in the preceding year. And if we go by that theory, that process, those estimates, we would be looking at a point five one nine two four as a potential tax rate. The voter approval rate would produce about three and a half percent more tax revenue than that was produced last year. And if we adopt this or we propose this tax rate, it must be approved by the voters holding an election. However, for municipalities under thirty thousand in population, the voter approval tax rate is the highest tax rate that may be adopted without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate unless the de minimis rate exceeds the voter approval rate. Player's mind, kind of where we're at. That proposed rate in the FY twenty four, twenty five budget is point five 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 zero. The de minimis tax rate applies to municipalities with a population of less than thirty thousand. The de minimis tax rate is the rate equal to the sum of the no new revenue maintenance and operations rate and the rate that will raise five hundred thousand more in revenue in the current debt rate. The estimated de minimis tax rate for FY twenty four, twenty five is point five nine zero nine seven. Tonight, what we're asking is for council to establish the ceiling or the maximum for the property tax rate. We're not adopting the tax rate. That will come on in September. We will have a public hearing on September ninth on the tax rate. We will have a public hearing on September sixteenth on the budget to approve the budget, and then we approve the tax rate. What we're asking tonight is for the council to establish the ceiling for the tax rate. This means we will not go above this number. What we're gonna be asking you for the ceiling, if you'll recall, the voter approval tax rate is point five 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 seven zero. We are asking for the ceiling to be point five five zero zero zero. This is not the tax rate. We are asking to be adopted. This is just the ceiling. We will not go above this number. In your packet, you will see a recommended tax rate of point five three five as the tax rate, but that's after we have some discussions. If you, when we get into budget a little bit later, you will see that even at the point five three five, the proposed budget right now is operating at a deficit. We know we still have to have some discussion with some council, with the council on some items. We also know that we need to make some adjustments. We also are very strong in some fund balances. That doesn't mean we want to deplete them. But if we have some fund balances that can help us take care of some items, some one-time items, we ought to look at considering using some of those fund balances to take care of some items before us. So this item has two different components to it. One is a motion to propose a maximum or a ceiling tax rate for the twenty four, twenty five budget and then establish the date for the public hearing. So staff is asking for council to consider establishing the maximum tax rate or the ceiling at point five five zero zero zero.
Danny Bill, I know this is, this is new. I'm sure y'all have looked at it, but any questions?
It's just barely higher than what.
Right, and just the ceiling, not the tax rate. It's just to give ourselves some room in case there were issues with the numbers that come back that the county gives us or in any other areas. It is not a tax rate. It's just the maximum amount we could ever go. Tax rate will be set nine, nine, six. Right? Nine, nine. Public hearing nine, six.
Hearing is September ninth.
Everything is the ninth.
Yes, ma'am.
Some time in September, early the ninth.
So you're asking for a ceiling?
Yes, sir, that we will.
Five, zero, zero, zero.
Yes, sir, we will not exceed that number.
And you're asking a recommended rate of five, one, nine, two, four?
The recommended rate that the staff will be discussing with y'all some more is point five three five zero.
Which is a little lower than what we currently have?
Yes, the current rate is point five four two zero two.
I have a question. Any more questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that we, um, you want the, the.
Establish the ceiling as point five five.
Five, five, zero, zero, zero.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Then mayor and council members, we need a second motion that establishes the date for the public hearing on the tax rate, and that date is September ninth. We'll get the city secretary to make sure.
I know that we set the date for establishing our tax rate and all of the related things that go with that for September the ninth, twenty twenty.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next, we will move on to agenda item number three, and we will consider and take necessary action to approve ordinance ten eighty regarding updates to regulations pertaining park operations on a second reading. Hi, Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So last council meeting, I brought to you some park ordinance changes, and that was approved on the first reading. So tonight is simply just the second reading of that. Was there any questions on the park ordinances between the last meeting and this meeting? Okay. It just simply is upping some of our fishing ordinances mainly, but also a couple of other things, just making that language cleaner. So with that, I do recommend that we move on with the approval of the second reading on the park ordinance ten eighty.
I move to approve ordinance ten eighty regarding updates to regulations pertaining to park operations on a second reading. Motion in a second. All in favor? Okay, are we reading?
I don't have anything to read.
Okay.
We will get you some.
We will share.
You want me to read? You don't want me to?
They can read really fast if you want. Yeah.
So typically, he reads the and the titles, and then only the things that change.
No, no, I got it. I was so good. So, all right, yeah, I'll see how fast I can read it for you. So ordinance number ten eighty and ordinance amending the City of Levelland, Texas Code of Ordinances by amending Article twelve point two hundred, Parks Regulating Certain Activities in a Park, amending Article twelve point four hundred, Fishing in Lobo Lake, amending the regulations for fishing in Lobo Lake and Bresheer Lake as community fishing lakes, providing for a penalty not to exceed five hundred dollars for each offense, providing an effective date, providing a savings clause, providing a repealer, and providing for publication. Whereas the City Council for the City of Levelland pursuant to the constitutional laws of the state of Texas, including but not limited to Article eleven, section five of Texas Constitution, as a home rule, the city has the authority to set forth ordinances and regulations and exercise its police powers for the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the city, citizens of the city of Levelland, including the regulation of amusement and nuisances. Whereas, in accordance with Article three, section, I'm terrible. I think that's eleven. Fifteen, right? No, twenty. Yeah, there we go. I'm obviously very bad at the Roman numerals. Thank you. No regard, God is there. Of the City of Levelland City Charter, has the exclusive control over and the power to regulate the use of public parks owned by the City of Levelland. Whereas the City Council previously passed ordinances regulating camping, the possession of firearms, and fishing within the public parks of the City of Levelland, and whereas due to changes in the parks within the municipal limits of the City of Levelland and changes in state regulations relating to the authority of local governments relating to public property, previously passed ordinances of the City of Levelland regulating parks should be amended. And whereas the City Council of the City of Levelland finds that the following amendments to Article twelve point two hundred and twelve point four hundred of the Code of Ordinances nineteen ninety seven, City of Levelland regulating certain activities at the public parks is reasonable and beneficial for the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Levelland and a proper exercise of its police power. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City of Levelland, Texas, that section one, Code of Ordinances nineteen ninety seven, City of Levelland is hereby amended by amending twelve point two five, that two, zero, five, entitled weapons as follows. And then clarifying that new additions or changes to the current code are underlined and italicized and deleted provisions are indicated by strike through text. Twelve point two zero five, it shall be unlawful, and this is how it'll read once adopted. It shall be unlawful for any person to discharge any firearm, rifle, shotgun, BB gun, airgun, spring gun, slingshot, bow, crossbow, or other weapon in which the propelling force is gunpowder, a string, uh, spring or air in any park or recreational area. And then section two is the Code of Ordinances nineteen ninety seven, City of Levelland is hereby amended by amending twelve point two one two, entitled regulated activities as follows. And that is adding to B, so B will read, the following activities are allowed within the park only after receiving a written permit issued pursuant to section twelve point two one three of this article. And then section three, uh, the Code of Ordinances nineteen ninety seven, City of Levelland is hereby amended by amending twelve point four zero one, entitled Fishing in Lobo Lake. And that twelve point four zero one, the title is changing to Fishing in City Parks. Then A two changes so that all fishing shall be from the shoreline or in a non-motorized boat such as a kayak, paddleboat, or canoe. And then A five and six and seven read as follows. A daily bag limit as established by the regulations promulgated by the Texas Parks and Wildlife relating to community fishing lakes. Six, fishing must be conducted by fishing pole only, with no more than two fishing poles in use by any one person at any time. And seven, all regulations promulgated by the Texas Parks and Wildlife relating to community fishing lakes must be followed.
Yeah.
Those were the only changes I think that I slid away with, but that needs somebody to vote.
Okay, wait a motion in a second. Now I approve ordinance ten eighty regarding updates to regulations pertaining park operations on a second reading. So the second? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Oh, wow. Item four, we will consider and take necessary action to approve ordinance ten eighty one regarding building inspection fees on a first reading.
Did you open the public hearing, ma'am?
We will open the public hearing right now at six nineteen P M.
Oh, between you and the clock, I'm sorry.
I have to go by the almighty Apple clocks here, so we'll give that a minute for a minute or two to tick by to make sure no one needs to like to speak on that.
Ma'am, let me just give an introduction to this while we're waiting for comments on the public hearing. During the last legislative session, House Bill nineteen twenty two was passed and became effective on January first, twenty twenty four. This bill stated that the city council must hold a public hearing and vote to reauthorize any city fee charged as a condition of constructing, renovating, or remodeling a residential commercial structure at least once every ten years. If the city fails to do so, then the fees will go away. In reviewing our codes, it looks like the last revision was in twenty seventeen, but it looks like the majority of our codes were last revised in twenty ten. So tonight, there is a drafting here of the building and construction permit proposed, fee schedule. The city building inspection staff reviewed the City of Andrews, City of Mewshew, City of Pampa, City of Slaton, City of Brownfield, City of Plainview, to get a comparison of their fees. We also looked at the City of Lubbock, mainly because a lot of our contractors come out of there. So through that review, we presented or worked with our attorney to create an ordinance that will look at amending these fees. So now if there's any comments, we'll let them.
Any comments on the public hearing? There's not, so we will close that public hearing at six twenty one. So we will consider and take necessary action to approve ordinance ten eighty one regarding building inspection fees on a first reading.
Mayor, I move that the council approve ordinance ten eighty one regarding building inspection fees on a first reading.
Second.
Now we will read it.
Ordinance number one zero eight one, in ordinance amending the City of Levelland, Texas Code of Ordinances, Article seven relating to permit fees and other costs for building and construction, certificate of occupancy, plumbing, mechanical, fuel, gas, and electric, roofing, accessory buildings, carports, and fences, providing a penalty, providing an effective date, providing a savings clause, providing a repealer, and providing for publication. Whereas the City Council for the City of Levelland, Texas pursuant to the constitution, laws of the state of Texas, including but not limited to Article eleven, section five of the Texas Constitution, as a home rule, the city has the authority to set forth ordinances and regulations and exercise its police powers and to take necessary steps to protect the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the citizens of the city of Levelland. And whereas in exercising its legal and proper police power as well as its authority to protect the health and safety of its citizens, the city council previously approved an ordinance related to building and construction standards and permit fees and other costs related to such building and construction. And whereas there is a considerable expense in administering these regulations, both in monetary terms and in the time and effort required of city staff. And whereas the City Council of the City of Levelland in balancing the interest recited above in accordance with the laws of the United States and Texas, finds the following amendments regulating building and construction standards and permit fees and other costs to be reasonable and beneficial for the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Levelland and proper exercise of its police power. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City of Levelland, Texas, that section one, Code of Ordinances nineteen ninety seven, City of Levelland, Texas, Article seven is hereby deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. Section seven point one zero zero, building and construction permit fees, subsection A, new residential one and two family dwellings, construction, the greater of point zero seven per square foot of gross building area or fifty dollars. B, renovation or modeling, remodeling residential dwellings, the greater of one dollar per one thousand dollars cost or fifty dollars. C, new construction other than residential, the greater of point one two per square foot of gross building area or seventy five dollars. D, renovation or remodeling other than residential, the greater of a dollar fifty per thousand cost or seventy five dollars. Letter E, contractor registration is twenty five dollars. Section seven point one five zero, plan review for construction projects, letter A, residential new construction, twenty five percent of the general permit fee with a fifty dollar minimum fee. B, commercial new construction, twenty five percent of the general permit fee with a one hundred dollar minimum fee. Letter C, residential remodel construction, twenty five dollars. Letter D, commercial remodel construction, fifty dollars. Letter E, review of revised plans for residential and commercial, twenty five dollars. Section seven point one zero one, certificate of occupancy permit fees. Letter A, new residential dwelling construction included in building permit. B, renovation or remodeling residential one and two family dwellings, thirty dollars. Letter C, new construction other than residential, thirty dollars. Letter D, renovation or remodeling other than residential, thirty dollars. Letter E, no other permit issued, thirty dollars. Section seven point two zero zero, plumbing, mechanical, fuel, gas, and electrical permit fees. Letter A, the fee for repairs, upgrades, and replacement of meters or other city-owned equipment or supplies is thirty dollars. Letter B, notwithstanding, letter A herein, the fee for every plumbing, mechanical, fuel, gas, and electrical permit shall be greater of point zero five per square foot of gross building area or thirty dollars. Section seven point two five zero, roofing permit fees. Letter A, residential roofing permit, fifty dollars. Letter B, commercial roofing permit, seventy five dollars. Section seven point two seven. Section seven point two seven five miscellaneous permit fees. Letter A, accessory buildings, carports, and fences, thirty dollars. Letter B, residential and commercial curb cuts, thirty dollars. Section seven point three zero zero, multiple inspections or re-inspections. Letter A, for any permit issued pursuant to Article seven, if more than one inspection is required, fifteen dollars for each inspection. Letter B, for any permit issued under Article seven above, if the project or portion thereof fails to pass inspection, a reinspection fee of thirty dollars shall be paid prior to reinspection. If the project or portion thereof fails to pass at the first reinspection, the reinspection fee for each subsequent reinspection shall be forty five dollars payable prior to the reinspection. Section seven point four, general fees, demolition of a building, thirty dollars plus any required documentation. Section seven point five zero zero penalty for either any project for which a permit fee is required under this article and work is commenced prior to issue of a, of the permit or for any inspection or reinspection that is required but not requested and performed. One, the fee charged will be up to the greater of twice the permit inspection or reinspection fee or one hundred dollars, whichever is greater. Two, the subject property will not be connected to utility services provided by the city or by entities providing services pursuant to franchise and other agreements. And three, the city at its discretion obtain any other and further relief, including but not limited to temporary and permanent injunctive relief. Section ten, effective date, this ordinance shall take effect immediately from and after its passage and publication as may be required by governing law. Section eleven repealed. All other terms and provisions of the code of ordinances nineteen ninety seven, city of Loveland, not in conflict herewith and not hereby amended shall remain in full force and effect. Section twelve's separability, if any provision, section, subsection, sentence, clause, or the application of the same to any person or set of circumstances for any reason is held to be unconstitutional, void, or invalid, or for any reason unenforceable, the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance or or the application thereby shall remain in effect. It being the intent of the city council of the city of Loveland, Texas in adopting this ordinance that no portion thereof or provision contained herein shall become inoperative or fail by any reasons of unconstitutionality or any other portion or provision. Section thirteen, publication, the city secretary of civil, city of Loveland is hereby authorized and directed to cause publication of the descriptive caption of this ordinance as an alternate alternative method provided by law passed and approved on the first reading this nineteenth day of August twenty twenty four.
Totally. We have a motion in a second. We've read the ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we will move on to item number six. Consider and take necessary action on resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four approving an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation regarding the closing of two blocks of state highway for the falling for the Wallace event festival event. Hi Kelly.
Hi.
Welcome in your new role.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is a brand new event that's coming from the Wallace Theater on and the Main Street program. They're asking for a day to just welcome guests and community members downtown to do some shopping and just let them know that they're still continuing and hopefully going to open that Wallace in early twenty twenty five. So just a, a day of fun, free fun and, um, a day just to kind of recognize the Wallace and everything they've given back to the community.
Of course, we have the agreement with the state that to, to close the streets, you know, surrounding the square like it's the same closure we've kind of always done, all corridors, right?
Yes, ma'am, and we did meet with the events special, uh, group and Kevin Hearn with the Streets Department is aware of this, so everybody's on board.
I move to approve resolutions twenty twenty four dash twenty four approving an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation regarding the closing of two blocks of state highway for the falling for the Wallace festival event.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And next we will move on. Don't leave Kelly. As you know, to item number seven, which will be to, all right, it's a long ways down our packet. Yes, we'll get there seven and eight. Consider and take necessary action on the event's application for the Loveland Main Street sip and swirl event scheduled for October eleventh, twenty twenty four.
So we're bringing this events application to y'all because there will be alcohol on the square during that time. This is the sixth annual event of sip and swirl, and it's one of our biggest fundraisers for Main Street to keep those planners full and to make Main Street and downtown beautiful.
Are they selling the, uh, the alcohol there?
Yes, sir. There will be wineries and, um, some craft beers.
Inside the stores and then the squares completely blocked off.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So they, they can walk, they can walk around.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They do make sure they're very good. Not that I'm know every year, but, um, they make sure that they check out easy and it's, it's fantastic.
There's a police presence, there's.
And it was before I was hired on, but they did have the events application meeting where PD and Streets and everybody was that involved in that application process.
No, there's a good plan there, and I know it's, it's going to be great with you at the helm of that event.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I move that we approve the event application for Loveland Main Street's sip and swirl event.
A second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we will approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five approving an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation regarding the closing of two blocks of state highway for the Loveland sip and swirl event. And again, it's just for the street closures. That was the approval of the B event. And now it's for the street closures. They're exactly the same as for falling as the Wallace.
I move that we approve resolution for twenty twenty four dash twenty five approving amendment with the Texas Department of Transportation regarding the closing of two blocks of state highway for the Loveland sip and swirl event.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're so welcome. Thank you, Kelly. Next will be item number nine, consider and take necessary action to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement to purchase a brush truck for the Loveland Fire Department.
Mayor, council members, member of the public, I know y'all are probably tired of seeing this item. But as I was preparing and reviewing the contract to order this item, uh, it dawned on me through all the times I brought this before y'all, I didn't get actual authorization to enter into the contract so we could order this thing. It'll take about nine months. I know it's probably implied, but that is not how we need to do things. So I brought it back before y'all asking for your permission to move forward with this. Texas Forest Service, if you recall, this was a grant. Um, they have granted us an extension until spring uh, to get this, uh, thing ordered and get it to us. So we'll probably have to ask for another extension once we know what the delivery date is, but I don't think that will be a, a problem.
Move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement to purchase a brush truck for the Loveland Fire Department. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten, we will have a weather update from city manager James Fisher.
Mayor, council members, and member of the public, uh, first thing, um, address our, our citizens' comments from earlier. Um, tomorrow, uh, the city and the county, and thank you county commissioners, uh, will be moving all of the green waste, um, off our debris sites to the pit that's out, uh, outside of the city limits. Uh, Commissioner Wisdom has a uh, cliche pit that we're going to be able to utilize to get everything there. Doesn't necessarily mean we're going to burn it tomorrow because we've got to work with weather conditions and those kind of things. Once that is done, we get all the green waste out, and then we're going to try our best to get out the rest of the construction debris and all of those kind of things. Uh, the challenge is, um, our landfill is full. So we're trying to figure out some creative ways of what we need to do there to get that out. Our goal is to get all of that off Sherman to get it completely clean tomorrow or at least in the ninety percentile. And then start walking in and cleaning it up so that, uh, it is better than what we found it. We know these debris piles have, uh, been a, a nuisance. And, you know, we've been working on them little by little, but, um, she's right, there's, it seems like some of this stuff grows. And the unfortunate thing is, uh, we just got a Facebook post today that showed an alley that one piece of the alley is completely covered in debris. I don't know, uh, what is going on within our community, but it's very disappointing because we're getting a lot of stuff either in the debris fields, and now that the debris fields are closed, and now they're just dumping it in alleys where some places you can't even see the dumpster. So, uh, it's very frustrating, um, and we're going to do everything we can to try to get in front of this. But, uh, we know that this is, uh, very, very important to, uh, get these debris fields cleaned up. The, the rail park one may take a little bit longer because our focus tomorrow is to get the one-off Sherman cleaned up and get it, uh, as back to original condition as much as we can. Cole and I are also, uh, in discussions with, uh, FEMA on our public disaster assistance to make sure we've got all of our I's dotted and, and T's crossed. Um, it's always interesting when you talk with people out of Washington, D.C. that have not been here with some of the things they want to come up with to, to mitigate so we don't have this storm again. Um, they asked us what we were doing to mitigate the winds. So we're working on that plan. Um.
Right. It's it all in.
I'm not sure what we'll do, but we, we'll come up with something. And also city staff, uh, we're working on, uh, R I Ps for hail damage to send out to various vendors to, uh, get some quotes back. And when we get that, that'll come back before council of how we manage that. Uh, we're still working with our risk pool on the vehicles that are totaled. What do we do with those? How do we transition out? And also do we have to repair everything that has hail damage? Because not everything may need to be. It may just have a few bings in it, but it's a work truck or it's a work vehicle. Does, it doesn't have to look pristine, but we're, we're working on.
We do multiple work queues on that so that multiple vendors could work on those vehicles, but when they all go to one vendor.
We're going to send it out, see if we can get one person that can come in here and get it done. Because if I have multiple people, I have a feeling it's going to drag out and it's going to be crazy. So we're going to send it out. Uh, we found something from five or six years ago when we did something similar. And we had them list all the vehicles and what they thought and all that kind of stuff. So hopefully we can get that on your, uh, September ninth agenda so we can take care of that item.
Is there any way going back to the debris piles? I know there's some couches out there and some of the things that are, I would say, majoritely composed of wood. Do we take that with the green waste?
No, ma'am.
We're limited by T C E Q's permit, correct?
Green waste is only natural items.
Couches are just what's so unpart of what's such unsightly.
That one right on the curb, my husband said he's going to take it home and put it in our garage.
Well, I'm going to make sure.
Absolutely not.
We've had a we've had an ask for one of the couches to be used, uh, for seating for the marshal of the parade this weekend, so we, uh, trying to get one of those cleaned up for that.
I know the perfect one, the one right around the curb.
So now we, we know that these things are just absolutely ridiculous, and we're trying.
Just wondered if we could burn the couches as well or other things in there that.
Too many chemicals within couches, so we cannot do that. But over on the west side, right next to city park, there's now a new tire dumping spot that that's occurring.
Oh, my gosh.
So I don't know what's going, but it is very, very frustrating, and our guys are getting pretty well fed up that, um, it's just we get an area cleaned up and we start feeling good and we turn around and it's just, uh, people are just, I, I don't know what it is. And it, in all likelihood, it's probably not all our residents. It's probably people from outside of our community that are taking advantage of our community. So that's another reason to get it cleaned up. We can get them cleaned up, then maybe they'll take their.
Well, the one in the city park makes me upset. I mean, maybe we need to ride some tickets there. I mean, you have to catch them. I understand.
Catch them. That's the hard part.
It was nearly clean already, but then I think they got tired. They went to behind my house and that thing is a mess. They, they dumped a big tree up there and breeze and everything. I mean, so we don't know what to do with it.
They have cleaned that area up at least two or three times, I think, for sure.
Yes, ma'am. We've.
Pulled the non-emergency line when I saw people out dumping after the signs were posted. I don't know what came of it, but I feel bad. Those non-emergencies probably like, God, these calls keep coming in, but that's how we're going to catch the people. That's what you're supposed to be.
Where, and, you know, by the time we get there, they're already out. They don't waste any time.
I'm sure they were already gone by the time.
But into trash.
Yeah.
So that tree that they put behind, uh, on the dumpsters were really do I need to cut it so that it can get up?
Let us go look at it. We, we'll figure out what to do.
Okay. We're still getting a lot of tires.
We, we're getting some. I don't know where they're all coming from. I didn't know the storm blew that many off, but there, there's, um, there's more than our share.
I think they were just setting in people's backyards to begin with.
Yeah. Your tire shop.
Now they're just using.
Or, or a commercial business that's, yeah.
And, and I know it's, it's not funny. I know people that live around them. It is, it, it is everything that she said, that, you know, you're waiting for the next storm to blow all that in there or catch fire or rodents. We know that, and we're trying to get rid of this stuff as fast as we can. It didn't help any that our landfill reached its capacity for this fiscal year. Um, and it took a while to get the green permit or to get the green waste, uh,
Improved.
Permit, so we've gotten that. And Cole's checking to see if we can get a second one, just in case we get more, uh, green waste. We know that, uh, just to single them out. We know the country club's got a lot of, uh, trees that were damaged that have to come down. We don't really need that in our landfill. Um, so we're going to see if we can get a secondary to, to get that cleaned up, but before we do that, we want to figure out a site that if there's limbs and stuff, because people will just start dumping them again. And it, it's just, uh, a very never-ending frustrating cycle that, uh, people are just.
Well, I'm, I'm very thankful that we're going to deal with the green waste this week, and, and that will be gone. That will be helpful, but once that's gone, can we then push all of the rest of it into one pile to make, I would think one pile would be more slightly than the couch by the road. Being honest.
They just pulled their tailgate down and.
We're going to do our best to completely clean up Sherman where there's nothing there as of tomorrow. If we have to take it to the rail park, we will. I don't really want to do that. But if.
But at least it's our land.
It's our land.
That's kind of where we're at now. If we get it on our stuff, then we can be working on that.
Does the, does our, our permit fiscal year run with the same as our budget year?
It's, it's the state's fiscal year that we have to work through. Their, their year ends August thirty one.
Okay. In this month, we can reset.
But as you know, we just rejected bids about six hundred thousand. Well, we're going to be, you know, this new sale. And Joe and I were talking about today with budget, you know, we're going to find ourselves having to build pits and cells a lot faster than anticipated, which puts a huge impact on budget as well. So.
James, if I'm, if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, there's two situations we're dealing with the landfill. The first one is a type one pit is closed because we're at, we're at the state fiscal year, we only allow us to dump seventy-three hundred tons a year. So we have done that. Type one waste is any attributable waste, any waste that's in your dumpsters in the alleys. Um, the type four pit's a different situation. The type four pit is at capacity. So that's what we're, uh, in the process of, uh, getting those bits right back out and getting that. And type four is C and D, yeah, construction debris, uh, demolition debris, things like that.
Bin, so we just had to reject those bins and input that out again.
Yes, correct.
Have them work.
So as soon as we get that, uh, bid it out again and awarded, uh, within one to two months, we'll have a new pit built and then we're back where we started.
In the interim, do you see us taking that to surrounding community or how do you foresee us dealing with the couches per se?
Everything's going to go if anything, we've got to put it on our rail yard, we will, until we can figure out where to dispose of it properly. I was really nervous when Joe grabbed the mic. I thought we're fixing to karaoke and off he went. So even though he is very talented, be tip.
Fisher, I applaud your efforts, so I guess I share your frustrations too because those are really unsightly and I know it's working through all the bureaucratic nonsense, it's still hard to dispose of a lot of those kinds of things.
It's, it is, and thank you, but.
I don't know what to tell you to do.
We just got to keep trying. And what's frustrating is, and, and I've talked to some of the guys when they're out there working. I mean, they're loading and putting it in the truck, and then when the truck drives off, because sometimes it's the same guy loading and driving the truck, and when he's coming back, he's seeing someone dumping right where they cleared an area. So it's just, it's extremely frustrating. And, you know, as soon as we, you know, put cameras out there or all that stuff, we start citing people and then, you know, they'll all be. you know, they'll all be screaming, yelling and wanting to know all of these other kinds of things. We're just wanting people to work with us. That's all we're asking is to help us help their neighbor. Because these folks that lived across, that live across and live in the neighborhoods of, didn't ask for all of this. And so we're going to continue to work very hard to again, as I told you, our goal is to have this cleaned up by September one. We're now on the nineteenth, so we got a lot of work to do in a few, few short days.
Thank you. Yes, on that item. Item eleven is discussion on the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Will Pia change in a minute?
Good find a proudy face for Mayor Pro Temp.
Mayor, council member, member of the public, this budget that you have in front of you. I wouldn't say it is the final. This is the proposed budget one final. It has everything and there are some deficits within this budget. And again, this is not the final budget. We know that there's still some items to be cut, adjusted, look at different things, but we wanted to get this to you tonight so that y'all could have it before Thursday night when we discuss the budget. But the other thing is, and you'll see this posted very shortly along with this budget is a statement that is required by the state of Texas that says this budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is a three point five seven percent increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Joe, and this is off the point five three. Yes, if we adjust that number in any way, that statement will adjust in, in some small ways. So we've walked through this budget and we'll walk through it again on Thursday. But this is it. And again, you will see some, some deficit numbers in there. Uh, this does include a three percent raise for all employees. So it's our first priority is take care of our employees so they can take care of our community. I think we've seen this summer numerous incidents where our employees have exceeded every expectation. So we want to make sure we continue to take care of them. But other things, we just through Joe's dedication, hard work, long hours, zero social life and and Cynthia as well, that this is the product that we're willing to present to y'all and, and go over Thursday. Our ultimate goal is to have the final budget to you after the twenty-sixth of next week when we do our second budget work session. So you'll have the final budget two or three weeks to review and critique prior to the public hearings on September ninth. You have anything you want to answer? You got a mic beside you?
No, I just want to add that this one does have a table of contents. So you can go to the front and look where you want to look and take you to that one page and page numbered. And as James mentioned, this is the entire budget. The entirety of it, yes.
Thank you. I know it's come a long way, but it's a work in progress and there's definitely been lots of work put into it and change and improvement.
If you have any questions, if you want to meet one-on-one or just whatever, call Joe, call myself. We'll be more than happy to sit down with you before Thursday or even after Thursday. If, if that helps you get your hands around this. There's a lot of different funds in here. There's a lot of different things that are going on. So let us know how we can help you.
Also want to reiterate that the tax structure at the beginning is based again on the five, three, five, zero. And also we're basing the budget off of ninety-six percent. So, and that's ninety-six and then you'll see the hundred percent right beside that one too. So, but we're looking at the ninety-six percent. If I'm not mistaken, it's about three million, six hundred and ten thousand or so. Just want to make, make y'all aware about.
And he is counting about three percent increase in sales tax, right? That's the number?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
And we're going to pray for nine.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
You don't need any action on this?
No, sir.
Anybody have any other, anything else they'd like to discuss on, on this right now or? Yeah, take it home, absorb it, parent it on your own time? Yeah, good with that. Okay. Move on to item number twelve, city manager report, staff update, project update, staff citizen recognition. Items of community interest, but no action will be taken on this item.
Mayor, council members, member of the public, just comments for you here. I'll hand y'all a copy of this after this. Texas Department of Agriculture has picked up all of the red flower beetle traps due to inactivity of the red flower beetle. I know some folks still have some around them. We are continuing to monitor the situation and, and do what we can. Back to Tex dot today. They will be in Levelland in late September, early October to start the College Avenue project. And we're working through a couple of challenges. And first thing is they will be milling down about eight inches and then place six inches of premix. Has a potential of manholes and water valves sticking up two inches. So we're trying to see if we can find a workaround on this or you're going to have to go very slow down College Avenue when this is all done. We may Joe and I talked about this today with Kevin, we may, there's this project's in three different sections as it moves down College Avenue. And it looks like maybe the majority of the manholes and valves are in one section. So we may just completely wait on that until next April when they come back and mill and do it all that time. So we don't have manholes and water valves sticking up two inches. So.
Hey.
So from their finish, when they're totally done, we're going to be sticking up two, two inches?
No, not when they're totally done.
During the, just during.
During the construction project.
Oh, I totally thought you meant when they were done. I was like, they're just going to leave it like that?
Well, they are going to leave it. They're going to come in and mill down eight inches.
Yes.
And then the premix is only six inches. And then it'll stay that way until April or May of next year. And then they put the final two inches on top of that to create a smooth.
So from October to April or May, we would, yeah, that's a long time. That's a long time. It's not going to tell the entire community.
And that it's not us.
Yeah, exactly.
Joe, what area is it mainly?
Turn that mic on.
Uh, the area in question is going to be fifth and college all the way down to probably tenth and college. Uh, there's a bulk of all of our main trunk line sewer lines.
Markers, physical markers.
McDonald's to the O'Reilly's.
Yes, uh, between Quick Lane and Dicky's. That area all the way down to about where the car wash, Lone Star Car Wash is at on Tenth Street.
Oh, that's the area.
Yeah, that, the drag. I mean.
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, that's.
But one good thing about it, something that got pointed out earlier too, is that it's all in the middle of the road. So maybe it's all in the turning lanes. So hopefully that won't, won't be as bad as, as we think it is. But there are some, going to be some valves out there that are probably going to be sticking just a little bit because, uh, just just looking at it, it looks like some of the valves are even lower than what the pavement is right now. So maybe some of those would be right at and not as much as two inches. So.
Can we ask about seal coat?
I'm getting there, sir.
I'm just asking for a brief.
That wasn't next on the list, sir.
They canceled it.
Again. Again.
Okay, we're not starting that. We're
Yeah.
Um, the next item before you, the Economic Development Board. Um, and Justin have been meeting with South Plains College on this truck driving school. I think we've got some good momentum in there. At the EDC board meeting last week, the EDC board is very excited about this item. Um, and they adjusted their budget before final approval of their budget that will be in our budget when we adopt the whole thing. Justin had about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for the truck driving school. They added another seven hundred thousand dollars. There, there's approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the EDC for this truck driving school. That Justin's going to be talking to South Plains College about how we can get this project moving forward. Uh, it can be very beneficial for the city, for our business community, for South Plains Community Association with the bus drivers is just this can be the catalyst of several other things that could happen in that rail park. We know the rail park is primarily industrial. But I think if we can get some positive activity out there, some positive traction, it'll draw other people in there and say, hey, this would be a good place to put my business. This would be a good place to relocate and, and do this. So I'm excited about that. Uh, I think it'll be a good positive thing and we're going to talk to South Plains College about uh, how do we get this off high center and how do we get it moving forward? Might be relying on the expertise of one of our council members as we go before workforce groups and others about trying to find some additional funding to make this move forward. Now, city seal coats. They are expected to be here on Friday, the thirteenth of September. I know Mayor. Yes, sir. I know that's a great day for them to start seal coat. But we'll take it. Uh, and then probably be in South Plains College internally. I'm working on the streets there, the fourteenth and fifteenth. And then probably be out of here by the sixteenth, seventeenth at the latest. Should not take them uh, more than a couple of days, three days to get everything done. This item came up right before I came in here and it's something I've got a visit with our attorneys on. But Joe Shad came up to me and said, okay, we've got accessory building, storage buildings that in our code says that they cannot be more than five hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the main residential dwelling per accessory building, whichever is greater. The issue that's coming up, we had several of these accessory buildings that were greater than five hundred square feet or were greater than that twenty-five percent. But they got damaged, destroyed in the storm and they're wanting to come back and build to that same size again. My initial thought is the code does not allow it just because usually the way those grandfather clauses read, if they're destroyed by a storm, then when you rebuild, you got to rebuild to the current code. But I just wanted y'all to be aware that that issue is floating. I will sit down with our attorneys uh, and get their clarification, their opinion on it, and then we will go from there.
Is that the way this one reads?
Our current code says five hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the main residential dwelling per, so.
But the grandfather clause.
Grandfather is usually, if it was greater than all of that, they could stay there as long as they were fine. But if they get destroyed or whatever, then when you rebuild or if you want to rebuild, you've got to come back in compliance. Yes, sir. But I haven't gotten that official from the, the city attorney's office yet. Cause I haven't talked to him about it yet. It just came up this afternoon, but I will be visiting with him. The Home Sweet Hoco Parade is this Saturday. Uh, if any of y'all are interested in riding in the parade, we can come up with some way to maybe get y'all on there. So if you want to do something, let me know. By noon tomorrow or let Andre know.
I'm kidding. I don't have anything to dress them up as. They're feral.
Our offices will close on Monday, September second. Cotton and Crude is the seventh. And I don't know if y'all have looked, but almost every weekend till about the end of October, there is something going on in, in our community. A lot of good fun things. So we're all going to be very, very busy, but and again, I just wanted to remind you guys that the RPs for hail damage will be going out and hopefully can get this back by September ninth. Any questions from council?
I'd just like to say on the EDC and the Truck Driving School, I met with Justin Friday morning and I am so excited about this project. Finally get it off high center to get it moving in the right direction. A thank you to the LEDC board for the initial huge investment, change to their budget for this project. I cannot wait. I know South Plains College is going to be so excited as we work through this and get this actually going. And I'm, I'm proud of it. I'm excited and I'm proud for the work that Justin put into it. And I just can't wait to see this project actually move forward. It was, it was a big investment for EDC.
Do, do you know how much money they need total?
The nine fifty is, is, is big. It gets them really close to where they need to be considering, uh, there's quite a bit of money in there from the EDC grant. But I don't know that that gets them the the building that they all want. You know, there was the thought of they, they need a building to teach the classes in there. Then the thought was, let's not limit ourselves. Let's build it a little bit bigger where we could even maybe make some, have some city training events, you know, uh, think beyond the scope a little bit. Uh, so Justin could really answer that, that better. But to be honest, the seven hundred and fifty thousand or seven hundred thousand that they're adding gets us pretty close, I think. Now, you know, construction costs keep going up every single day. It's not like we've bid it out yet. Uh, but we could maybe with additional workforce dollars or something, we could maybe even make it better. Or do things that they didn't think there was ever a possibility.
Do you know how much additional money they might need for that?
The, the Economic Development Grant from the Feds is about a fifty fifty at one time. I believe it was an eighty twenty. And so they're going back before them and just seeing maybe if they can do a little bit more. Um, a lot of it, the project depends if they're going to build a building or if they're just going to have a truck driving school. I think most of us think that they need a building with classrooms out there because they'll have simulators. So I think the project was two point one million or something like that. I've got it on my desk. I'm sorry. I can brought it, but and I'll scan all that and send that to you. So y'all, y'all can see the total scope of this project, but it is a I believe it's about two point. And then I think the, the ED the Economic Development Authority would be about one million, one point one. And then the EDC city would be, school would be responsible for the additional piece as well.
The seventy by sixty classroom bill is, is in this city. It's been old, but was about five hundred thousand dollars. But if we could find the sky, tie that back to workforce since it is the classroom.
Do you think Tex dot would show any interest in this at all? Anybody talk to Tex dot? Do you know what?
No, I, I talked to Tex dot about possibly uh, getting some millings from all of this. Normally it goes to the county. And they were going to look into possibly providing some millings for this project.
What about funds for?
I, I doubt if Tex dot would have any, but we can look at that and I'll, I'll send y'all everything on, on the truck driving school so that y'all can see it. And if we want to discuss it further, I can put it uh, on a different agendas and we can discuss it more fully. So y'all can have a chance and have Justin here as well.
But the idea of them sending their people to establish those licenses potentially to the school. Um, James had a great idea of maybe holding spots out for municipal spots, county spots if the county needed licenses at the school.
I, I'd like to admit it and say bus and truck.
Yes. And with.
Because the schools, not just Levelland I S D, but the schools, surrounding schools always are competing with us and, and with each other in terms of bus drivers.
Justin went on with myself on that, on that conversation and said he was interested in even the LEDC potentially trying to give scholarships to maybe some local school districts to try to say, hey, you have employee A right here that already works for you that says if he can go get a CBL or bus driving certificate for free. Says if he can go get a C V L or bus driving certificate for free, then he'll do it. Um, and so he had some great creative out of the box ideas with some good partnerships, I thought. I was very impressed.
We will add this to next Monday's, uh, agenda before we get into budget. Just, and I'll ask Justin to come. And just kind of give y'all an overview of what it is. That way. We can have a more, uh, dialogues. It's, it's isn't exactly on the agenda. I just wanted to give you all an update, but I'll put it on there so we can have more. And we'll have more here by the end and then y'all can ask.
If, if it's all right, I could, I'd, I'd be glad to make some inquiries with Texas.
Well, let's, let's get him in here and let's talk, see what we need and where we need help. And then we'll, we'll make assignments for that.
All right. Are we, we good on that item? Do you think everybody, everybody good on that item? All right. Get a little script out here. The next item is to convene into executive session, according to the Texas Government Code 551.074 to deliberate the appointment. Employment evaluation duties discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee city manager. Uh, the city council of the city of Levelland will begin its executive session on this 19th day of August, 2024 at. 7:07 PM, 0 o'clock. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, in accordance with Texas Government Code 55107. Or to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee city manager. Will we have any action for the, um, for the press, for Casey?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The City Council, the City of Lebanon has completed its executive session on the nineteenth day of August twenty twenty four at seven fifty five P. M. o'clock.